To the regularly scheduled May twenty first, two thousand twenty four, City of Nacogdoches, City Council meeting. Mr. Bolden, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Let us bow for a moment of prayer. Our heaven and father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed on our city and local communities. I pray for those who have been elected to govern the city and that they make wise and godly decisions, which is always in the best interest of the city. I pray for them to be blessed by you. God, please bless the men and women in city government, the mayor, the city council, the staff, and all city workers, and certainly those that put themselves in harm's way like the law enforcement, firefighters, and EMS workers. I am so thankful we have all of these in our lives, and I ask you in the precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, amen.
You will stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
No open form? Okay. Okay, open form, we don't have any this evening, so we'll go right into number four. Mr. Bolden, you come down here, please. All right. I know it's a bittersweet night for you. After twelve years, I want to thank you from the bottom of our heart, this entire city council, employees, everyone, for twelve years of community service. You've done an excellent job. It's been a pleasure working with you so much. Thank you, Mayor. Let me get all this on the ground. Boy, this was not as long as that last one. Okay. Whereas council member Roy Bolden, Roy Edward Bolden, has devoted his time and effort towards making the City of Nacogdoches a better place to live and work, and whereas through his dedication to the betterment of the community, he has earned the admiration and respect from the people with whom he has come in contact and the citizens he has served obdutively, and whereas Roy has faithfully served the community as Southeast Ward Councilmember of the City of Nacogdoches from May two thousand twelve to May two thousand twenty-four, and whereas the performance of his duties and responsibility as a member of the city council has been characterized by excellent constructive contributions to local government and the community. Now therefore, bid proclaimed that I, Randy Johnson, Mayor of the City of Nacogdoches, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize and extend our heartfelt appreciation to Roy Bolden for his outstanding service in the City of Nacogdoches. Thank you, Mr. Bolden, very much. You. You want to get all the y'all together first?
Yeah. Just the three of you.
Yeah.
That's a messy mess. Your family, your house.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and the city council. The mayor has allowed me to read a thank you. It has been an immense pleasure to have the opportunity to serve on the city council of Nacogdoches. While representing the Southeast Ward, I was fortunate enough to meet amazing citizens as well as other incredible individuals throughout the city. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. Having served on the city council for twelve years, I can well appreciate the service that the city administrations and staff provide to the city. Your efforts to maintain a safe and well-organized operation for the citizens has produced a thriving and attractive environment. I commend my colleagues on the city council for their commitment and dedication in making the City of Nacogdoches a better place for all of us to live and work. Special thanks to the thirteen former city council members and present members of the city council, city managers, city secretary, city attorney, and special thanks to former secretary Jane Venton for her support and assistance. To the city staff and all of the employees of City of Nacogdoches, your continuous support and assistance will always be remembered. I am extremely blessed to have served on the city council of Nacogdoches. Finally, special thanks to my family for their unwavering love, patient care, and understanding in helping me to fulfill my responsibilities. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Okay, next item will be four B, consideration and approval of resolution canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the general election held on May fourth, two thousand twenty-four by the City of Nacogdoches, Texas. Madam Secretary.
Good evening, Mayor and council, Rhonda Lewis, excuse me, city secretary. Today I'll read into record the election results from the May fourth, two thousand twenty-four general election, and I also ask that you approve a resolution declaring those results. So we had two wards up for election this year, the southeast and southwest wards. Mr. Huckabee ran unopposed in the southwest ward, and congratulations to him. So we'll move on to the southeast ward, where there were four thousand two hundred and eight registered voters in the southeast ward, and Mr. Bolden received thirty absentee votes, eighteen early votes, and seventeen election day votes for thirty-five point one four percent of the total votes. You can see there on the slide. Mr. Blaine Williams received eight absentee votes, seventy-eight early votes, and thirty-four election day votes for sixty-four point eight six percent of the total votes, declaring Mr. Williams the winner of the southeast ward. And if you have any questions, I'm ready to answer those for you, or you can move on to the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as stated in item four B.
I'll second it. Have a motion to second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Now, Rhonda, the oaths.
It's me again, city secretary Rhonda Lewis. Today we're going to swear into office our new council member, Mr. Blaine Williams, and I'd like to read the statement of officer and oath of office as well. So we'll ask Mr. Williams and his lovely wife to come up. And if you'd like to, you can stand. Raise your left hand, one, five, and raise your right hand, please. Raise your right hand, thank you. And repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I, Blaine Williams.
Do solemnly swear that I have not
Do solemnly swear that I have not
directly or indirectly paid
Directly or indirectly paid
offered, promised to pay
Offered, promised to pay
contribute or promised to contribute
Contribute or promised to contribute
any money or thing of value
Any thing of money, any thing
or promised any public office or employment
Or promised any public office
Or employment
Or employment
for the giving or withholding of the vote
For the giving or withholding of the vote
at the election at which I was elected
At the election at which I was elected
or as a reward to secure my appointment
Or as a reward to secure my appointment
or confirmation
Or confirmation
whichever the case may be
Whichever the case may be
so help me God
So help me God.
Thank you so much. And now the oath, I'm sorry. We have to take an oath.
Okay.
And you can raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Blaine Williams.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
that I will faithfully execute
That I will faithfully execute
the duties of the office of
The duties of the office of
city council member southeast ward
City council member southeast ward
of the state of Texas
Of the state of Texas
and will to the best of my ability
And will to the best of my ability
preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws
of the United States
Of the United States
and of this state
And of this state
so help me God
So help me God.
Thank you so much, and yours, Juan, and congratulations.
Thank you.
You come on up here now. No more of that.
That's good for work.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to working with you.
All right.
Congratulations, Mr. Williams.
You gonna spurt that in? Do you swear to me?
I just wanted to go, I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
Yes. Raise your right hand, and repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I, Blaine Williams.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
that I will faithfully execute
That I will faithfully execute
the duties of the office of
The duties of the office of
city council member southeast ward
City council member southeast ward
of the state of Texas
Of the state of Texas
and will to the best of my ability
And will to the best of my ability
preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws
of the United States
Of the United States
and of this state
And of this state
so help me God
So help me God.
Thank you so much, and yours, Juan, and congratulations.
Thank you.
You come on up here now. No more of that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to working with you.
Congratulations, Mr. Williams.
You gonna spurt that in? Do you swear to me?
I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
Yes. Raise your right hand, and repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I, Chad Huckabee.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
that I will faithfully execute
That I will faithfully execute
the duties of the office of
The duties of the office of
city council member southwest ward
City council member southwest ward
of the state of Texas
Of the state of Texas
and will to the best of my ability preserve
And will to the best of my ability preserve
protect and defend
Protect and defend
the Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws
of the United States
Of the United States
and this state
And this state
so help me God
So help me God.
Thank you. And I'll read the statement. I please state your name.
I, Chad Huckabee.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
that I have not directly or indirectly
That I have not directly or indirectly
paid, offered, promised
Paid, offered, promised
to pay, contributed
To pay, contributed
or promised to contribute
Or promised to contribute
any money or thing of value
Any money or thing of value
or promised any public office
Or promised any public office
or employment for the giving or withholding
Or employment for the giving or withholding
of a vote at the election
Of a vote at the election
at which I was elected
At which I was elected
or as a reward
Or as a reward
to secure my appointment or confirmation
To secure my appointment or confirmation
whichever the case may be
Whichever the case may be
so help me God
So help me God.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations, young man. Okay, congratulations to both of you. Okay, items to be removed from the consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, regular agenda item, these are all public hearings, so the audience will be able to say whatever they want to, whenever they want to say it, so we don't need this. First item is public hearing, consider approval of a specific use permit for distillation of liquors, spirits, et cetera, crafts in B three Central Business District on Lot seventeen, City Block three, located at four oh three East Hospital Street. The applicant is proposing to operate an approximately twelve hundred square foot craft distillery with a tasting room in an existing shopping center. This request has been submitted by Sherry Hart of Mad Hatter Distillery, case file SUP two thousand twenty-four dash oh two. Interim city manager, Juan.
Thank you, Mayor, city council. Congratulations, Councilman Williams and Councilman Huckabee.
Excuse me, just a minute. I said city manager. Sorry.
If that's Freudian, I mean, he looks good on camera and he can speak, so.
Sorry, I got my terms mixed up there.
Oh, well, it was good while it lasted.
Interim city planner, Juan. Felt good, didn't it?
Not really.
So this request is for a specific use permit to operate a craft distillery with a tasting room located at four oh three East Hospital Street in the downtown area just east of the Fredonia Hotel. The property is not in a historic district but is located adjacent to the downtown historic district to the south and the Washington Historic District to the north. This property is owned B three Central Business and the surrounding areas are zoned and developed as commercial, which include a mix of retail, restaurants, general offices, with the exception of a few single-family homes, zone general business to the north adjacent to the subject property. The applicant is proposing to use the existing twelve hundred square foot building with a distilling and tasting room limited to the interior of the building. The applicant is proposing the following condition: hours of operation will be from two to nine P M. Monday through Friday, eleven A M. to nine P M. on Saturday, and twelve P M. to six P M. on Sunday. This is a view of the subject property from East Hospital Street and some of the surrounding adjacent commercial buildings. This slide shows the types of uses within the two hundred foot notification area. Staff sent out nine notices to those property owners and have received one written response in favor of the request. Staff also held a neighborhood meeting for the property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property on April second. Two of the surrounding property owners that live in one of the adjacent single-family homes to the north attended the meeting with concerns of noise from the possibility of live music and seating in the back. The applicant explained that all business operations would be contained to the interior of the building and no live music is being proposed. The property owners were fine with the proposal. Staff believes that this use is compatible with the surrounding similar uses and is in line with the comprehensive plan by supporting economic development and keeping a vibrant and viable commercial area. Staff believes that this request meets the conditions for approval and recommends approval of the specific use permit with the conditions for hours of operation. On May thirteenth, the P and Z Commission voted unanimously to approve the request with the conditions for the hours of operation, and this concludes staff's presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions from the council. And the applicant, Sherry Hat, is present and would like to address the council.
I'm good. Do you have any? Miss Hat?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Congratulations, congratulations. I'm sure we all get to know each other pretty well. My name is Sherry Hat, I'm the owner of the Mad Hatter Distillery. We're located at four oh three East Hospital Street. We're planning on opening a tasting room along with our distillery where we will be selling our craft cocktails made with spirits in-house. I think I missed a slide there. Maybe not. The number one question when we talk about this project is, when are we opening? And it's as soon as we can, but there is a process that we have to go through. We had, of course, our neighborhood meeting on April second, and that went really well. We had our planning and zoning meeting last week, also went really well. We're having our meeting this evening, which is going fabulously so far. And then once this decision is made, we'll move on to our T T B and T A B C approvals. So we have to get our distillers and rectifiers permit from T A B C. We have to get a distillers permit from T T B, and we also have to get labeling and bottling approval from the T T B. Once we have all that, we're anticipating shortly thereafter. It takes about seventy-five days for the T T B permit, and T A B C is running about six to twelve months out right now, so we're hoping that that was old information on their website and that they've got their slate cleaned exactly right now for the Mad Hatter Distillery. I think we're also waiting on approval from the fire marshal and the local municipalities too, so we have some permits we gotta pull for the construction company. Like I said, we are located at four oh three East Hospital Street, we're between the Fredonia Hotel and the Fredonia Brewery. You can see both of them outside of the front door of the distillery. We chose that location because of its convenience to the hotel being right off the bricks where it's still in walking distance. A walk from the Fredonia Hotel, Nine Flags, Mad Hatter, Rusty Spur, Fredonia Brewery. Is there one more? Doing our little map. And why? Why are we doing this? Well, first of all, there's no distilleries downtown, so that is a number one for us. It also increases tax revenue for Nacogdoches. It draws tourism to Nacogdoches. We're gonna be a destination spot in Nacogdoches, so we're really excited about that. Will increase revenue for our local town. Do all of our sourcing that we possibly can locally. So we'll be getting our corn locally, our sugar locally, anything that we can. Our signage, we ended up coming to go to Lofken, but everything that we can keep local, we do keep local. And I still consider Lofken semi-local compared to where we were being sent to. We were being sent to Dallas for a sign, and so we decided to look a little further into that. And most importantly, this is my retirement plan. I really want to quit my day job. So we have a really conservative financial forecast. These numbers were taken from several different methods, and so these numbers are our worst-case scenario numbers. They're actually, I'll show you on the next slide, we have some real-time numbers that we pulled off of Bar Mart, it's public information, with the Fredonia Hotel and Convention Center, Bonita Creek Hall, and the Cottage Wine Bar. There was a couple of businesses that didn't have their information on there, so we weren't able to pull that information. But what we did is we took kind of an average of all those numbers, how they seemed to do, and then we looked at their numbers during COVID so that we could come up with our worst-case scenario numbers, and we're still, our worst-case scenario numbers are still acceptable. And that concludes my presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
Cheers.
Cheers. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have any comment from the audience? Okay, there being none?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion?
Yep.
Have a motion to second for Mr. Williams. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
To approve.
Or me?
To approve.
Motion to approve passes unanimously. Okay. Okay, next item, seven B, consider approval of a specific use permit for liquor by the drink, lots thirty, forty-nine, forty-nine A, forty-nine B, and out lot forty-seven A, City Block forty-three, as described in a deed dated July the seventeenth, two thousand twenty, recorded in document number two thousand twenty forty-four sixty of the real property records of Nacogdoches County, located on the southwest corner of Bremont Street and West Main Street. This request has been submitted by Brent Ivy with Ivy Got Property LLC, case file SUP two thousand twenty-four dash oh three. Interim city planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Juan Paulette, interim city planner. So this item was originally approved by city council in September of two thousand twenty-one, but unfortunately, due to unforeseen circumstances, the applicant had to delay the project. The reason that it is being presented again is because the ordinance states the SUP is only valid for a period of six months from approval. Then it is null and void unless construction is already started. The lot is located on the southwest corner of West Main and Bremen Street and just south of the Lone Star Feed Store. The property is currently undeveloped, and the owner plans to develop the property into a family-friendly indoor-outdoor bar and food service establishment that accommodates local food trucks and has an outdoor recreation area. The property is owned B two General Business and I one Light Industrial with the area consisting of a mix of zoning districts. Land uses include commercial and industrial development with a number of single-family homes along West Main Street that are owned B two General Business. A small portion of the property on the southwest corner of but single-family zoning, which is what triggers the need for the specific use permit. The ordinance states that if an establishment that sells liquor by the drink is closer than three hundred feet of a residential district, then it will need the approval of a specific use permit. And this is a picture of the empty lot of the subject property and some of the surrounding commercial adjacent buildings. So on the site plan, you'll see color-coded areas. The area in blue is the bar area and covered seating. The area, the yellow area is the recreation area for the outdoor games. Some of the common nuisances associated with this use is noise and light. To mitigate this, the applicant is proposing to preserve the natural buffer, which is shown in green, that exists along the south and western portions of the property, which range between thirty and seventy feet. On the top of the L-shaped lot is the parking area. The applicant is proposing approximately thirty-five spaces, and forty spaces are required. The applicant is sharing the parking, has a shared parking agreement for the remaining spaces with the adjacent commercial property to the south. Here's what the exterior elevations are gonna look like of the bar area and the covered So this slide shows the types of uses within the two hundred foot notification area. Staff sent out eleven notices to those property owners, and staff has received two written responses in favor of the request. Staff also held a neighborhood meeting for the property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property on February twenty-seventh. None of the surrounding property owners attended the meeting. Staff believes that this request meets the conditions for approval as outlined in the staff report and recommends approval of the specific use permit with the following conditions: hours of operation will be between eleven A M. and ten thirty P M. Monday through Sunday, and preserve the existing vegetative buffer as shown in the SUP exhibit. So on May thirteenth, the P and Z Commission voted unanimously to approve the request with the list Some of the common nuisances associated with this use is noise and light. To mitigate this, the applicant is proposing to preserve the natural buffer which is shown in green. That exists along the south and western portions of the property, which range between thirty and seventy feet. On the top of the L shaped lot is the parking area. The applicant is proposing approximately thirty-five spaces and forty spaces are required. The applicant is sharing the parking agreement, has a shared parking agreement for the remaining spaces with the adjacent commercial property to the south. Here's what the exterior elevations are going to look like of the bar area and the covered seating. So this slide shows the types of uses within the two hundred foot notification area. Staff sent out eleven notices to those property owners and staff has received two written responses in favor of the request. Staff also held a neighborhood meeting for the property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property on February twenty-seventh. None of the surrounding property owners attended the meeting. Staff believes that this request meets the conditions for approval as outlined in the staff report. And recommends approval of a specific use permit with the following conditions. Hours of operation will be between eleven A M. And ten thirty P M. Monday through Sunday. And preserve the existing vegetative buffer as shown in the S U P exhibit. So on May thirteenth, the P and Z Commission voted unanimously to approve the request with the listed conditions. And this concludes staff's presentation and I can answer any questions. The applicant is, wasn't able to make it to the meeting, but I believe he has a representative that is, uh, remoting in. If you have any questions for him.
I have one. How long does the additional parking amendment go for? I mean, how long is the agreement now?
As long as it, nothing changes, it's, uh, I don't, it should stay as long as the building, uh, as long as the S U P is, um, in, in use.
But I mean, it's with a different owner, right?
Correct, yes.
So do they have that in writing that?
Yes, they have a written agreement. We have a, a form that they fill out and both, uh, parties sign it. And, uh, if that business was to change, uh, hands, then they would have to, they would have to have a new, uh, agreement.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Any comment from the, uh, audience?
Good, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, sure.
My name is Jeremy Gottschall. I'm Brent Ivy's business partner. And I'm also lucky enough to be his brother-in-law. He's married to my sister. We're really excited to bring this back in front of you. I want to thank Juan and the planning and zoning staff, uh, and the rest of the staff for being so supportive, uh, as we've gone through this process. Uh, as Juan mentioned, we were delayed. Our initial, uh, timeline was probably somewhat optimistic. And then we were, uh, kind of beset by our, our architect had a, uh, an extended family issue to deal with. So we are excited about breaking ground here this year. Hopefully open the doors here this fall. And certainly appreciate the support. And for me, as a native Nacogdoches son, I was in the army for twenty-two years and live in San Antonio with my family now. This is really meaningful to me and I certainly appreciate your support. And, uh, finally, congratulations to Mr. Bolden on such a successful term as serving the city and the city council. And to the new gentleman taking their seats tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other comment? Okay, any comment from the, okay, we'll close the public hearing? Okay, open, okay. Okay, we're going to open this public hearing. Now we're going to close this public hearing. Okay, do I have a motion? Kathleen?
Oh, sure. Um, I move that we, um, approve the specific use permit as outlined in item seven C with the listed conditions.
I'll second. Okay, it's seven B, isn't it?
Seven C.
No, seven B.
Oh, seven B, sorry. Okay, sorry. I'm ahead of myself, right? Item seven B with the listed conditions. Thank you. I wrote it in the wrong spot.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Passes unanimously. Next item. Item seven C, public hearing. Consider approval of a specific use permit for a tattoo salon piercing studio in the north half lot. Number eight in block forty-two of the Robert Berger Subdivision of the city of Nacogdoches. A plat of which is recorded in volume one twenty-six, page four thirty-two. On the deed records of Nacogdoches County, Texas, located at ten twenty-three Douglas Road Suite one oh one. The applicant is proposing to use the existing eight hundred square feet building for a tattoo salon. This request has been submitted by Caitlin Stabinski. Case file S U P two thousand twenty-four dash oh four. Interim city planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Juan Paulette, interim city planner. So as stated, this request is for a specific use permit to operate a tattoo studio located at twelve oh three Douglas Road. Along the city's east-west commercial corridor. The applicant plans to use the existing square foot, eight hundred square foot tenant space to create hand poke tattoos. These tattoos are created without a machine and instead use a needle that is dipped in ink and then poked in the skin dot by dot. The property is zone B two general business and the surrounding areas are zone commercial. But are developed with a mix of retail, business, general office and residential. Here's a view of the subject property from, um, Douglas Highway. And then some of the surrounding, uh, properties. This slide shows the types of uses within the two hundred foot notification area. Staff sent out eleven notices to those property owners and have not received any responses in favor or in opposition of the request. Staff also held a neighborhood meeting for the property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property on April ninth. None of the surrounding property owners attended the, uh, meeting. Staff believes that this request meets the conditions for approval outlined in the staff report. And recommends approval of the specific use permit with the following conditions. Hours of operation will be from three to seven P M. Monday through Tuesday. One to eight P M. Wednesday through Saturday and closed on Sunday. On May thirteenth, the P and Z com- voted, the P and Z Commission voted unanimously to approve the conditions. Approve, approve the request with the noted conditions. And this concludes staff's presentation and I can answer any questions from the commission. And the applicant Caitlin is, uh, present if you have any questions for her.
Window open then. Okay. Caitlin, do you want to say anything?
My name is Caitlin Stabinski and I'm the one proposing this new studio. I've been doing this for about three years. I've wanted to step into my own studio, have my own space. It is kind of a large space for myself. I may look into getting somebody else to be with me in the far future, but for right now, it's just me. Appointment only. It would no, be no walk-ins. Um, if this special permit is approved, then I would go through with the state of Texas. To apply for my license through the health department. And once that would be approved, I would start as soon as possible. So that's about it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you.
Okay. And now we'll open the, uh, public hearing. Any comment from the, uh, audience? Come up here, ma'am, and introduce yourself, please.
My name is Kathleen Williams. And I just have a question because she's close in my neighborhood. Right around the corner from my house. And I have a fifteen-year-old granddaughter. And I just want to know what will be her, um, rules for ages. And, you know, checking to be sure and not just if they walk in and they have the money. To get what they want done. Because like I said, this is close in my neighborhood and there's a family neighborhood. And with that, just the concern with the young people in our neighborhood. I mean, I don't have any objections to it. Just would like to know what will be her rules and strict guidelines and checking to make sure. That kids are not just walking in off the street. And if they have the money, that it's okay.
Okay, she can probably answer that, Ms. Williams. Caitlin, you want to come back up here, please?
Um, so per Texas law, it is completely illegal to tattoo a minor even with parental consent. Uh, I would require a valid form of I D., either driver's license or passport, depending if they lacked one or the other. Um, so I do have a consent form I would go through and I'd verify their age. Again, it's not legal in the state of Texas even with parental consent. The only time that that is even legal is to cover up something like a hate symbol. Or something inappropriate that the parent would give approval for, but personally, I would not feel comfortable tattooing a minor anyways.
So there are laws to protect.
Yes.
What is the legal age?
Eighteen. So eighteen is the legal limit in Texas, like I said, even with parental consent under that, it's.
And you verify all that, make sure they have passport, driver's license, something you would just?
I would keep their I D. On, um, on file. And that way I'd have verification and I'd have history of everybody that comes through.
And Ms. Stabinski, I think you said you only, um, do this by appointment.
Yes.
Not walk in.
No, not at the time, just since I'm by myself. Um, I have a decent clientele built up locally and from out of town, just from doing this for the past several years and.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, ma'am.
My question to you is what do you have in place if you're doing a tattoo and something happens to, to that person that you tattooed?
To that person? Uh, for the state, you have to report anything that happens? Are you meaning like something after the fact, like it in?
Say the person, say the person, you know, you're doing it too, they develop an emergency and have to have assistance. What do you have in place?
I would contact emergency services. I'm lucky enough in that location that the police station is right down the street also. So I would just, I would contact somebody as soon as possible.
And your safety working by yourself, how do you feel about that?
Um, I do feel safe. I do have precautions set in place. I do have a doorbell that has a camera on it, so I would be able to see who was ever at my door. Um, also, my husband will probably have an office space there. He works from home. And so he'll be up there at times anyways to just keep an eye on things and be in secondary person in the location.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Is there any other questions that I can help with?
I don't have any.
If there are, just let me know.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, now we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion from the council?
Make a motion. We approve item seven C with the noted conditions from planning and zoning.
A second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion. Carries unanimously.
Congratulations.
Okay, next item. Seven D, public hearing. Consider approval of a zone change from R four multi-family to R two single family. For approximately one acre. Being lot twelve, city block forty-one located at eleven oh two Logan's Port Street. This request has been submitted by Rudy Bohack. Case file. Z O N. Two thousand twenty-four dash zero one.
Thank you, Mayor. Juan Paulette, interim city planner. So this property is located on the east side of Logan's Port Street, just south of Pecan Park and is currently developed with a single family residence. The area is a mix of low and high residential zoning districts consisting of R one, R two, single family, R three, two family, and R four, multi-family. Surrounding land uses are single family, vacant land, and Pecan Park to the north. R two, single family zoning district is intended to provide a slightly higher density residential area. Lots in the area must be six thousand square feet or larger. This request is compatible with the zoning area, zoning in the area and will not impact adjacent land uses. The future land use plan designates the subject property as single family residential. Which is described in the comprehensive plan as conventional one family detached dwellings that include duplexes. R two meets this comprehensive plan designation. If approved, uh, the applicant plans to provide, uh, to subdivide the property into three lots. And construct two single family homes on either side of the existing single, single family home in the middle. Here's a picture of the subject property. Another one looking south. So this slide shows the types of uses within the two hundred foot notification area. Staff sent out fifteen notices to those property owners and have, have not received any, uh, responses in opposition or in favor of the request. Staff believes that this request meets the conditions for approval as outlined in the staff report. And recommends approval of the zone change from R four multi-family to R two, single family. On May thirteenth, the P and Z voted unanimously to approve the request as presented. And this concludes staff's presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And I believe the applicant, uh, Mr. Bohack is here. If you have any questions for him.
Okay. Mr. Bohack, you want, you have anything to say? Okay. Okay, now we'll open the, uh, public hearing. Any comments from the, uh, audience, please, okay? Ms. Castella?
Oh, yes. Pat Castella, ten oh nine Logan's Port Street. I am, of course, in favor, but I have a speech. Managing a city is akin to running a business, but decision-making is critical. Residing in a city is a personal decision. Older neighborhoods are vulnerable because of the absence of adequate zoning and protection. Neighborhoods are more than just places to live. They are where we truly belong. Please remember this when considering a zoning change. Thank you and I appreciate all that you do, even if I don't always agree. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Closing. Okay, now we'll close the public hearing. Any comments from the council?
I do. I have a comment. So. I applaud the work that brought us here tonight. The return of this property to R two zoning better protects the south entrance to one of the city's most precious assets, Pecan Park. It reduces the threat of deterioration of an historic neighborhood. It allows the city to focus on truly critical infrastructure needs. Rather than creating new problems with a narrow half-paved road inadequate for multi-family housing. But most of all, it demonstrates the importance of working together. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Bohack, Ms. Castella and Mr. Blackburn for your work on this project. And I therefore, if there are no other comments. Move to approve the zone change from R four multi-family to R two, single family. For approximately one point zero acres as outlined in item seven D.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda. Executive session for today, May the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, has been canceled by the requister, which is the Nacogdoches Economic Development Corporation. That concludes, uh, our regularly scheduled, uh, meeting on the twenty-first. This meeting is adjourned and God bless the great city of Nacogdoches, Texas.